Call Finance Committee order, roll call please.
Alderman Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Police.
Here.
Alderman Lewitin. Alderman Shockey.
Here.
Alderman Caddella.
Here.
Alderman Winger.
Here.
Alderman Coles.
Here.
Alderman Knight.
Here.
Any motion approved in minutes, March 12, 2009?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I abstain. The other item on the agenda, before we get into the budget, will be the RFQ auditing service. Obviously, there was some concern on that. And I guess, the majority of the group wanted to go to change auditing firm to see if it was worth upgrading an auditing firm somewhere else. The next lower bidder was Wolf and Company, L and L P. I have talked to Brad on this, he has no problem working with them or changing auditing firm at this time. So, I will attain the motion on the floor, look for a second if there's any comments about it. I make the motion to approve the contract for auditing firm Wolf and Company, L and P, not exceed $28,000. Do I have a second? Do I have a question? I have one question, Brad. I did talk to you, if changing firms like we are doing, if there is a problem after first year, is there a way to get out of that contract with any other problems? And will there be a penalty?
If you notice, the way that the bid sheet's laid out, it's a series of three, of one, it's a series of three one-year contracts essentially. I've spoken to a number of firms, including Wolf, on that topic, and they all agreed that while it is a three-year contract, it is truly just year-to-year because if we do have that significant of issues with them, we can get out of that at the conclusion of the services for a given fiscal year.
Okay.
And there is no penalty, to any of their knowledge, to get out of that contract.
Good. Any other questions on that? Is the motion on the floor, there's a second, all in favor? Aye.
No.
opposed.
Roll call please.
Alderman Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Police.
Yes.
Alderman Lewitin.
Yes.
Alderman Shockey. Alderman Caddella.
No.
Alderman Winger.
Yes.
Alderman Coles.
No.
Alderman Knight.
No.
Next item on the agenda will be reporting a recommendation motion for 2010 budget. Wall, are you going to take this, and then we'll start into the budget process?
Thank you, Alderman Wesley. I just want to give you an overview of the budget, primarily for the citizens. I assume impressed that all the aldermen have taken a look at the budget that we presented to you last week. Brad, you want to go up the next slide? What's new in the budget this year? We're budgeting for information technology expenditures in the general fund and closing out the IT funds. In the past, we've moved money from the general fund to an IT fund, paper computers out of the IT fund. It's really, to me, unnecessary transfer to a separate fund, we want to clean up the budget a little bit. So, from now on, we propose budgeting for information technology equipment right out of the general fund. Because of the reorganization of Public Works that we talked about last year, we've moved the engineering department fully into the general fund. In the past, it was funded half from Water and Sewer and half from General. It's easier and cleaner from an accounting point of view to put it all in the general fund, and you'll see that we're increasing the transfer from the Sycwater Sewer Fund to the general.
Clean up the budget and make it simpler to understand. General Fund as presented, and I will emphasize the words "as presented" because in a slide coming up, you'll see that there's been one change to what we presented to you last week. The general fund budget as presented proposes a small deficit of $54,000 and change, which we proposed to take out of our general fund reserve of over $9 million to give it a true balanced budget. The five largest revenue sources in the general fund composing 77% of the revenues are the sales tax, which is pretty flat. We assume a 2% increase, I believe, next year. The property tax, 20%, and as my budget message indicated, because of the cost of living, we assumed only 1/10th of 1% increase in the levy. Telecommunications tax, almost 12%, that's up about 3%. Income tax, 11%, that's up about 5%. Even though the economy statewide is starting to slow down, we're still showing revenues from income tax at about 5% over this fiscal year. And then fines from the court of about 9%, and we're showing a pretty healthy increase in that line item next year. I believe we've probably under-budgeted our revenues in years past, and we want to bring that up to what is more realistic. And there you see a pie chart of the various revenue sources for the general fund. Personnel costs. If you don't count health insurance and the police pension contribution, which is budgeted out of central services, and look just at the operating departments in the general fund, our personnel costs are 60% of the entire budget. And that doesn't include healthcare or police pension, and it doesn't include the three departments, IT, legal, and central services, that don't have any personnel costs associated with them. However, go ahead, next one. If you take the healthcare and pension, police pension portion of the central services and consider those personnel costs, which they are, our personnel costs are 74% of our entire general fund budget. That, to me, is very important because 80% of our personnel are in labor unions. And the two police unions have contracts that last until 2011, and we're stuck with the circumstances of that union. Our other union, Local 150, has a contract that's up this spring. Now, when personnel costs are 74% of our total budget, and 80% of our personnel are in labor unions, it stands to reason that the personnel costs are going to go up year by year by year. And if you look at the budget message that I sent you, the revenues for next year in the general fund are only anticipated to increase by 1%, but the overall expenditures in the general fund are anticipated to increase by almost 7%. Now, we've been able to get over that hump this coming year, but in the future, I think it's going to be critical that the city council talk about what we can do to either, A, raise revenues, B, hope that the economy turns around, or C, try to get a handle on our personnel costs. And that's a discussion for another night, because that's going to take several hours to work its way through. But I want to impress upon the council that if we don't do something different in the future, those personnel costs are going to eat up more and more of our general fund reserve. And again, the general fund reserve's pretty healthy, and we can handle that kind of a drawdown for several years, but I would not recommend that we make that a long-term proposition. And I think that we need a discussion in the next month or so about how we're going to deal with the whole issue of personnel costs as a percentage of the budget. Now, what's changed since last Friday, when we gave you the budget? We had anticipated a property tax levy of $2.46 million. That was the 1/10th of 1% increase over this fiscal year. Because of the triennial reassessment, however, we saw that, we got the information from DuPage County a couple days ago, that our assessed value has increased about, how much? How much is that in a percentage, about 7%? About 7%. And they, DuPage County has told us that the final projected levy, instead of $2.46 million, is $2.6 million. And historically, we budget a 2% uncollectible amount, and we just budget 98% of that final projected levy. And using that scenario, the new property tax amount would be $2.57 million instead of $2.46 million, and that results in an increase in our revenues of just over $115,000. And because of that, that $54,000 deficit that we talked about now becomes a small surplus of $60,000. So, what we're giving you, in terms of an amended budget, is a budget that is balanced, a small surplus. And anything you want to add or remove from the budget will increase or decrease that number. And for the benefit of the citizens, let me tell you a little bit about how we put the budget together. And you all remember this, because I talked about it when I interviewed for the job last summer. We've put this budget together in what we call a target approach. We figured out how much revenue we might have to spend, and we set a target number for the department heads that they had to come in with as their first cut out of the box. This year, we said your target's going to be a maintenance mode budget. No new people, no new programs, no new capital equipment, no new projects. Give us a budget that basically maintains the status quo, and that's your target. Anything over and above that, that you want, new people, new programs, new equipment, have to be asked for separately, have to be justified on their own, have to be determined in terms of priorities by the departments. And once we establish what the target level was, and you'll see the work papers when you go, as we go through this, anything past that is asked for, requested in an expanded package, a work paper that says, what do I want? What's the justification for that? How much does it cost? And what's the departmental priority? And then the finance director and I took a look at the monies available to us and made a determination whether we could afford to recommend those, what I call, expanded levels, and add it into the budget. And when you look through the budget work papers, the quote "expanded level" packages that I've recommended are on white pieces of paper with my initials down at the bottom. And the expanded levels that I've not recommended are on a pink piece of paper without my initials down at the bottom. So, this gives you an opportunity, if you think that one of the pink sheets is worthy of funding, you can go and add that into the budget. If you think some of the white expanded level sheets should not be funded, you can vote to take that out. And we'll keep a running tally in terms of where we are with respect to the surplus, and let you know at the end of the day, the actual budget that you've approved. And this gives you an opportunity to really prioritize these projects. Is a new one-ton dump truck more important than a reverse 911? Is a new employee more important than perhaps another employee in another department? And you get to take these packages and actually construct your own budget, as opposed to voting up or down on the entire thing. And we think that that'll give you the opportunity to look at the budget in more of a macro approach in terms of a policy document, as opposed to fixating on and spending a lot of time on, why are we spending $75 on paper clips rather than $70 that we did last year? I think our guys have done a pretty good job in terms of looking real hard at the costs that they have control over and giving you all what, in my opinion, is a pretty lean budget. Any other slides? Is that it? Oh, yeah, okay, let's go to Water and Sewer. Big picture on Water and Sewer Fund. The budget as presented shows a surplus of $175,000, mostly due to an increase in the rates that was passed by the city council last year that took effect, I believe, May 1. We're transferring an additional amount to the general fund to account for the closing of the Public Works Admin Division. And we've created, as I said, the new Water and Sewer Capital Projects Fund, and moved some money from the operating Water and Sewer Fund into the Capital Fund to handle the capital projects that you all approved back in a month or two ago. Is that it? We have spent a number of hours putting this together. A week or two ago, the Finance Committee Chair met with all the departments and looked over the budget after Brad and I have gone over it two or three times. I, again, I think it's fair to say it's a pretty lean budget. There are not a whole lot of additions to what we've been doing this fiscal year, and thankfully, we've been able to give you a budget that is in balance and doesn't dig into that reserve. And Mr. Chairman, I'll answer any questions you have, and if there are no questions, I'll turn it over back to you.
Yes, I did meet with all the department heads, as you spoke out. It's a pretty lean budget. It's a very lean budget. There is some stuff maybe you could look at, but they really put their hats in and really worked hard on this budget. The only thing that I'm going to say tonight is, we are going to work on this budget until 10:30. After 10:30, we are calling it quits for the night, wherever we are. Because I feel that we should not be here until 11, 12 o'clock, working on a budget when we've got some other days, then we're just going to be hashing back and forth. So, there will be, if we are in the middle of a project, in the middle of things, we'll finish that one off, but I think 10:30 will be long enough to work on this budget tonight. So, I think we, since Jeff will not be here next meeting for the budget, we figured that we would take his division, that he worked on, his budget, and I believe, Jeff, we decided with the tourism fund first, is that the one we want to go to first? All right, so we'll go to tourism fund first. Anyone have anything, oh, I'll wait till you get to that. Go ahead, Brad. Why are they looking for another?
Just before we get started on the tourism fund, just a public service reminder here, that anything that you take out or add into any of these funds, with the exception of the general fund, does not change any of those numbers that you saw on the screen there. So, that $60,000 surplus, changing anything in tourism doesn't change the general fund. Just a reminder that they are independent entities of one another, and changing one does not change the other one.
Right, because you have to spend it back in tourism fund. Right. Is everyone on that page, tourism fund? Anyone have any concerns on tourism fund? Mr. Newsio.
First of all, the summer event. Got the summer event, we're looking at, I don't know, it says $49,000. And I think the contract's like $98,000 for the event management company. Being the former chairman on special events, and Alderman Wesley was the co-chair, I mean, we had the fest last year, didn't turn out as well as we expected. Council looking in another direction, but before we put this in the budget again, I would really like to see what these guys are going to do, because we've been promised sponsorships and all this stuff, and I know you're having a meeting with them, I don't know, tomorrow or next week, Jeff?
I had it today.
Today.
I can give some updates if you want them tonight. But actually, the, this isn't in the budget for next year. This covers, this covers the contract we already signed up for, so it's one contracted event. It's not for a second go-around. This is the money left over that we'll still owe from the one event.
From this year.
And in, worked in this budget is the $25,000 we usually spend if next some, not this summer, but the next summer, we want to revert back to doing it ourselves. So, it's only one event with SEM worked into the budget, and then we budgeted in $25,000 for 2010's event for us to do it ourselves, if we don't like SEM.
Where's that at?
So, in summary, we're only committed to one SEM event right now.
But under community events, we show in $112,000. If we take out $49,000, that's, doesn't leave 25.
That's for everything, though.
No, because we throw in, we throw in the 25 that we would plan for 2010 summer event. In addition to that 25, we have the expenses for our fireworks. We have expenses for Memorial Day Parade, holiday tree lighting, things like, Sounds of Summer, things like that.
That's everything.
If you want, I can go over the whole breakdown of what's in there, if you want. There's maybe 15 things that are covered in that.
Right.
So, there's the fireworks, there would be the $25,000 we normally would spend on the event, the holiday tree lighting money, Memorial Day Parade, Sounds of Summer, some advertising.
The recognition dinner, right?
Volunteer recognition dinner, student government night, Memorial Day Parade candy, some promotions, advertising, some miscellaneous items.
So, we're not signing up for another year?
No.
Before we see what's what?
No, that's why we worked in 25 for us to do it ourselves. If we wanted SEM to do it again, we'd have to make an amendment, or something to that effect.
Anyone else? Okay. Mr. Caddell.
Still under the same area, but different subject, is that right? Can I jump to another line?
Tourism, yeah.
Okay. The accounting in 4902-5, the annual contribution to the Woodfield Chicago Northwest Convention Bureau. Can somebody remind me what this is and what we're getting for that $27,000?
This is our contribution that we've made in the past to the Convention Bureau up in Schaumburg, the Woodfield Chicago Northwest Convention Bureau. I have asked the President of the Chamber what we get out of that contribution. She said that there are some activities that they generate that we could take advantage of with respect to getting on their website, getting advertisements, and advertising for our two hotels, some assistance if there might be some sort of a, an event that they could book for the area. I don't know how much we've gotten out of that so far. I will tell you that I'm sitting, I sit on their sports committee that sort of oversees the booking of, you know, a soccer tournament or a judo tournament or something. And after the first meeting I attended, I asked them, what kind of spillover do the two Wooddale hotels get from that? And they said, well, not a whole lot, because Schaumburg's got 1,900 hotel rooms in the greater Woodfield area by itself, and if you look at the concentric circle they draw around the sphere of influence, we're right at the outskirts of that. So, I don't really know what we get in terms of a bang for the buck there, other than some residual advertising for the two hotels.
Go ahead, Mr. Caddell.
I don't know if tonight's the time to, you know, look at this at a micro scale, if we're only supposed to look at it at a macro scale, but if nobody has a better answer, I'm not enthusiastic about this line item.
Well, that's why we're going through it. I mean, if you guys want to eliminate it, you know, it's, like I said, this is not my budget, it's not, it's a council budget to present to the city. Mr. Mayor?
Actually, the Greater Woodfield Convention Bureau sent me a report, I don't know if that got distributed, apparently it did not, to the Alderman, as to how many rooms they booked in Wooddale the last year, and what the return was on the investment. I guess that didn't get distributed. In the past, we've invited the two managers to come and make their presentation as to why this shooter should not be funded. From their perspective, we collect $330,000 from their residents, and they kind of don't care what we do with the rest of the money, as long as we fund the Convention Bureau. And it's their choice and their recommendation that they'd rather be in the Woodfield Convention Bureau rather than the DuPage County Convention Bureau. So, I remind you that all this money must be spent to promote overnight stays in Wooddale, and traditionally, we kind of stretch that a little bit. And they're the two people that could object if they don't like the way we're spending it, and this is the only request they have, is that we fund this item.
Jeff, go ahead.
Just from an economic development aspect, with talking with Mr. Clicker, we agree that, you know, right now, there is, you know, small benefits of having it, but in the future, if we were to drop this $27,000 now, we would more than certainly have to re-anny up in a couple of years, once the Thorndale corridor would get going with increased hotel, increased hotel usage there. We would most certainly join back up. So, it has high future benefits.
Mr. Caddell.
A question to the mayor, what is that $330,000 from whatever, the Woodfield or the Schaumburg residence that you mentioned?
That's strictly the tax we collect on people using Wooddale hotel rooms.
Just, you are correct. Every month, the two hotels are required to remit 5% of the hotel room revenues to us, since that $330,000 is 5% of the hotel room revenues that they take in on an annual basis between the two hotels.
Anyone else? Christine Winger.
Thank you. We're talking about a deficit of $237,000 within the budget, and we're also looking at $150,000 for street lighting. And where are we proposing that the lights go if we're going to get this done in the next fiscal year?
Right.
Real quick, D, yeah, you are correct, that's just a deficit in this current proposed budget. If this were to pass as comprised, the fund itself would have just under $8,500 in fund balance remaining. So, it would still be in the black, albeit a little bit, but you are correct. For this proposed budget, we are proposing to budget a deficit of this fund of $237,000, correct?
Yes.
There'll still be positive and aggregate, but yes, you are correct.
Thank you. And where are we proposing that the lights are going to be put in?
Dave, do you want to speak to that?
Sure, we're proposing the ornamental streetlights on Wooddale Road, south of Irving Park, and it would basically mirror the lighting project that was done north of Irving Park. And in terms of the number of lights, we'll put in as many, you know, as we can get for that money, and that project is currently under design.
Okay, thank you.
Did we, I want to, did we set the engineering part for that yet?
Most of the engineering is being done in-house. We'll probably need a consultant to do the electrical part of it, and we're still working on what that would be. I don't know what that's going to be yet, but the majority of the engineering is done in-house.
Mr. Newsio.
No, somebody's still, we're still on.
It's lights? Yeah. Okay, could we get the Woodfield Mall thing off first? I mean, and then we could go on to the next item. Christine?
If you want comments on that, I will. That, we've done this in the past, and as the mayor said, the local hotels like this bureau. And if they're the ones that are generating the revenue for us, then I agree on letting them decide where we place the money. them decide where we place the money. And the bureau itself actually does a lot of good things, and they're active, and the summer, when they hold a luncheon, you should actually attend, whoever's in objection, to really see what they are doing out there and to learn about them. Thank you.
The only drawback I have on this is I really like to see, if the information did come forward, I mean, for what was used, I would like to see that. That the mayor gave the information on how many hotels' rooms were used there? I mean, if that's the case, I'd like to see that before I recommend this. Mr. Newsill? Are we?
I don't know. We on the lights or?
Okay. My question is, is everyone in favor of leaving the Woodfield Annual Chicago Woodfield Bureau intact for $27,000? Mr. Coles?
The last time we talked about taking this off, the two managers did come over to us, and they did talk to us, and they explained to us that this is one of the reasons why they're paying us that 5% on the tax. And they said that if they, we stopped that, that they would see about putting, making the tax, eliminating the tax. So I would say, we got to pay it. They also were nice enough to allow us to put their hotels on a, on a dial-a-ride bus, and they're paying for part of that, too. So, I mean, that's, that I think is a, if we take it off, I think we're going to have trouble with them. So let's leave it on.
Okay, so is a census to leave it on? And so we'll leave that on. Obviously, all right, we have a discussion on the lights now. Mr. Newsill?
No, no, John had the.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Caddell?
The lights are integral with the, with the Streetscape Committee. And just kind of remind anybody watching, you know, sitting in the audience or watching this on TV, we ended up with $150,000 because dollars have accrued over the past several years, I think it's three or four, three. And the idea was to continue to put more streetlights up every year. That was an old, old council decision long before I got here, and it stalled because of the question marks surrounding the Irving Park grade separation. So I think committee and council has discussed this in the past, and it was, you know, always keep holding the money aside, carry it over, and when we know what's happening, begin the installation again. And it seems clear that nothing is happening on Wooddale Road, south of Irving, no matter what happens, whether there's a bypass, a dogleg or not. So just to remind everybody, that's why there's $150,000 still there.
Mr. Coles?
This was postponed several times because of the road. We didn't know where the road was going, and it was going to be on the south side of Irving Park, and they were going to line it up like they did coming north here from Irving Park alongside the city hall and that. So that's the way it was going to be on the south side. That was all about five, six years ago. We just didn't have any money to have it done, and we finally put some money together, and that's why there's $150,000 in it.
Mr. Knite?
Yeah, on line item 49037, Streetscape Committee Annual Citywide Improvements. In '08, we were just at $8,000, and this year and next year, we're proposing $85,000. What does that entail, remind?
Yeah, actually, Alderman, Knite, the account, actually, the account number switched. We were in '07, the actual number was $49,000. That's in line item 49042, a couple lines down. Then it jumps up to 51. And then in the '09 budget, the account number switched to the 49037, and it jumped up to 85. So it was 49, 51, 85.
Okay, but what, what are we proposing then, 85,000?
Well, typically, the Streetscape Committee meets throughout the year on a monthly basis, and during the actual fiscal year, they recommend projects to the full council. Some of the projects they've had in the past were the beautification of the three triangle areas, the one by Christie's, the one by Shorty's, and the one by where the Freedom Bell used to be. They put in all-new landscaping, paver bricks, the wind sculptures were purchased out of this money. Prairie-style garbage cans, things like that. We don't typically have the projects ahead of time, but...
Okay. Mr. Newsill?
On the, staying on the Streetscape, the 85, do we need to go 85,000? Can we bring it back down to 50 and put more towards the lights?
We could do that. Typically, we don't usually spend the whole amount. We probably don't need the 85. I mean, 50 might be a more appropriate number, but, I mean, the chairman of the Streetscape can speak more of that than I can.
Mr. Caddell?
I'm okay with that, bringing that number down to 50,000, putting the rest into the lights, or even into assisting with the, with the number in parentheses to keep more money in the fund, for something that might come up in the future, specific. I mean, I can, I can go either way on that, but pulling a few dollars out of the Streetscape budget that we typically, I don't think we've really ever hit 50,000 anyway, or haven't exceeded it by much, I'd be okay with that.
I did, I did talk this over with Jeff when we had our budget meeting, and I, that was my suggestion as well. Christine Winger?
Where is the cost for the current lighting and the wind sculptures? Is that going to be in this current fiscal?
That's figured into the projected current fiscal year, that project.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Newsill?
Just one more item. Dial-a-ride. I know we need to keep this.
Could we, could we hold off on that? Let's clean up on the...
Oh, okay, sorry.
I like to clean up when we have a discussion. I like to see what the census is on our discussion on Streetscape. Is everyone in favor of taking Streetscape down to 50,000? Mr. Caddell?
One more piece of information I need from Mr. Murmas. What is our projection on those lights? The $7,000 or $8,000 we're spending in engineering plus about another 35?
That's in this fiscal year, not next fiscal year, though. We're thinking, well, $7,000 obviously for the engineering contract, that's going to be on the next council meeting agenda. And then I think the number was between 35 and 40 for the system, so it's 47.
So the 50 that we're talking about approving tonight is above and beyond, that it still allows Streetscape to do projects. We don't tie our hands after the lights are in.
Correct.
Just wanted to make sure I didn't put my foot in my mouth. Okay, I'm still fine with it.
It's a blank slate.
Christine Winger?
We need to remember that we're actually running this down to leave about 8,500 in. So if we're going to take off 35,000 off of Streetscape, it should really go back into the fund, not 35 more thousand at streetlights. $150,000, that's a good amount. And if we do need to make a budget amendment, we could. But let's not spend everything we have if we can cut a little bit out. Thank you.
But my question in that, if we cut it out totally or take it down, we have to spend it on tourism. Okay, so, I mean, I see your point there, too, but I don't know, what did these streetlights cost years ago? Does anyone know? I mean, Dan, you should know pretty much how much they cost.
They're approximately $8,000 per light, plus the engineering and the wiring and so forth.
So, I mean...
I was going to say, my recollection is the last project was something like 10 lights for $100,000, so I was thinking around $10,000 per light when you added everything together. But I'm just taking that off the top of my head.
Right, but then prices went up, and that was several years ago, since we hold this project off. Mr. Newsill?
Yeah. The only reason I suggested the lights is, you know, I don't know how many more lights we need, do we have a number? I mean, this project was even before, was going on, even before I came onto the council. I'd like to finish a project to say we finished it. I mean, they did a nice job, you guys did a nice job with the wind sculptures, and I'm sure the lights are going to be great over there, but I would just like to say, you know, we're done with the lights, let's move on to the next project. Do we know how many more lights we're looking at putting in? I mean, is it 30, 10, 20?
I think we're looking at 10 to 12 right now, but remember, I mean, it's, it's open-ended on the south side, you could put as many in as you wanted to. So are you asking how many for the $150,000, or just how many? I mean, obviously, you could keep extending the system.
So is the plan, I'm not sure exactly how far down we're going with the lights. I really, you know what, I probably should have asked just beforehand, how far are we going? All the way south to the, to Montrose, or going all the way north to Fos, I mean, to Thorndale?
I think we were going to Montrose.
I don't know what the city is...
This was before my time. I think the mayor could speak to this.
I can, I can answer that one.
Mr. Coles, go ahead, go ahead if you can, say Montrose.
We figured the lights up to Montrose.
That's what I thought.
When the street narrows, that's as far as the lights would go. And that, we figured that was a, oh, I think about a five-year project of getting them all done. And we were going to put them on both, one side, like we did here on this, on this street, on the north side.
All my chart?
Yeah, the original intent was to put the lights on Wooddale Road and Irving Park Road. And we started on Wooddale Road, south, or north, rather, and then we were supposed to go south on Wooddale Road, and then spread out on both sides on Irving Park Road to the city limits. That was the original intent. So it's not a thing that ended at a certain time, it was continued until those lights were all put in down Irving.
Okay. Christine Winger?
Two things that, again, we are proposing to run this down to about 8,500. And remember that we are funding the dial-a-ride out of this, and if something does change...